To tonight's common council meeting, see everyone has checked in. District seven is vacant, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment, at this time, the mayor will recognize members of the public who've indicated their desire to address the council. Upon recognition by the mayor, persons may address the council from the podium first stating their name, and address the council may take action on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Anyone from the public wish to address the council? Seeing no one, we'll go on to item number C. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, January twenty-second closed session, April ninth, two thousand nineteen, closed session, August thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, closed session, and August twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, closed session? Motion by Mr. Handler, second by Mr. Butke, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. A motion carries nine to zero. Staff updates.
Only one, and that's to announce again the meeting schedule for the budget sessions coming up. The first one will be on Monday, the twenty-first of October at five thirty PM, and that will be followed at seven, seven o'clock by the regular council meeting that night. Again, that's a day early because some members of the body will be going on Tuesday to the league conference in Green Bay. So Monday, the twenty-first at five thirty for the budget meeting, seven o'clock, the regular meeting. The other two will be Tuesday, the twenty-ninth of October at six PM, and then finally Monday, the fourth of November at five, I'm sorry, at six o'clock as well. So Mark does a new calendar, and I say that for the people at home, too, we want your input, and we want you to participate.
Thank you, anything else? Staff updates?
That's it.
Item E, mayor comments, just two quick ones. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the alderman in District One. Mike and his wife just celebrated fifty years of marriage. And therefore, I think his wife deserves some kind of proclamation. The second thing is, I would just like to thank Steve, your staff, Ron, and all the department heads and everybody within the city. This budget process that you all have gone through has been grueling. And the numbers are looking very good, still not to the end of it. But the amount of effort that the entire city staff has done to do this has really been amazing. And Steve, that is a reflection of your leadership, so thank you very much.
Thank you, we have an outstanding staff, your department heads, and everybody who participates in putting it together, so thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, item F, council comments, any council comments? No council comments, item, sorry.
This is more just a question, so the public is kind of informed. I've had two calls about this, which surprised me, and they were asking a question about whether dogs are allowed in the downtown Wenzel Plaza. And if so, are they supposed to be leashed, or what is the rules on that? Are you able to come up with, just so people know, because I've had asked of me twice by two separate people, actually.
Good evening, first of all, yes, dogs are allowed, they follow the same ordinance that would apply to all of the other public properties or park properties, so they should be leased, and obviously company waste that left behind.
Thank you, any other council comment? Item G, reports from commissions, boards, and committees? Any reports from commissions, boards, and committees? Seeing none, we'll go on to item H, the consent agenda, motion to receive and place and file approving all recommended actions in the consent agenda. There's a motion by Mr. Fire, second by Mrs. Spurro, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries nine to zero. Item J, second reading of ordinance number fourteen nineteen, annexation and setting community mixed-use, CMU, zoning district for nine point four-nine acres located west of North Central Avenue and east of North Peach Avenue, presented by Bryce Enbrook, City Planner.
Thank you, Mayor, so the applicant is looking to annex three parcels and road right-of-ways into the city. This would, this annex would include nine point four-nine acres that would become included into the city. The larger property is to the north of County Road E, and the, sorry, at the intersection of County Road E and west of Highway ninety-seven. The smaller property is to the south of that property across County Road E. The third parcel is an outlot, which a statue is currently located on it. An outlot is basically an undevelopable lot. There are city sanitary sewer and water services that are already located near the property. They will just have to be connected when a development is going to take place. All three parcels are recommended to be zoned community mixed-use, which is intended mainly for commercial uses. The staff report kind of highlighted why it's meeting our criteria of, of being appropriate for annexing into the city. The Department of Administration for the state of Wisconsin has reviewed the proposal and found that the annexation was found to be in the public interest. And these subject properties were located in the no contest area in the joint boundary plan that we have with the town of McMillan, meaning that this did not require approval from them. So with that, this is the second reading, and the recommendation is to approve ordinance number fourteen nine.
Thank you, Bryce, is there a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen nineteen? A motion by Mr. McSwain, and second by Mr. Whitzel, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. That motion carries nine to zero. Item K, request to approve resolution number twenty nineteen dash thirty-nine, authorizing a state trust fund loan in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand to cover costs related to a rail spur project in district number seven, Yellowstone Industrial Park, presented by Ron Ammon, Finance Director.
Thank you. You know, we had approved this state trust fund loan almost a year ago, but we wanted to kind of see how things shook out with our debt and other items. So we brought back the state trust fund loan. The seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a partial funding of the rail spur project, and that amount was kind of settled on based on how we forecasted it to do. So when we look at the forecasting of TID seven, we look like it's going to close in about two thousand twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-eight with PCA coming online. So we're just trying to time the dollars and the length of the loan to roughly match that. So the way state trust fund loans work, very simple application process, the resolution is about all we need right now. We would get the proceeds in this year, interest only in two thousand twenty, which helps our negative cash in TID seven, and in a way brings up our general fund, fund balance, too, because they'll have more cash, which gets repaid to the general fund, and then six principal payments, I believe they're flat, I haven't seen the debt schedule yet. In these state trust fund loans, there's also a prepay option, so in notification, you can pay them off. So if the TID does better than we expected, we can just notify, pay it off, and be done. And my last note there, says the interest rate actually dropped down to three point two-five percent, and that's locked in from when we first talked about it. So I'll take questions or a motion to approve.
Thank you, there is a motion to approve resolution number twenty nineteen dash thirty-nine. Motion by Mr. Butke, second by Mr. Handler, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. And motion carries nine to zero. Item L, discussion and possible action regarding resolution number twenty nineteen dash forty-one, requested secure short-term loan in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in conjunction with the city's two thousand twenty budget, presented by Ron Ammon, Finance Director.
All right, thank you, this one takes a little bit longer of an explanation, because it's probably new to the council. As you recall, we have worked with AILers, we corrected all our levy limit worksheets from two thousand twelve to two thousand eighteen, but we had made some errors on the debt service side. And after we corrected those, AILers also puts on a conference, once you have the correct forms, they also have recommendations on tools you can use to manage your levy limits. And one of the things they recommend to other clients is this type of short-term financing. So I'll kind of go through it, but really what it is, is a way to catch up on some levy that we under-levied in the past years, and the two thousand twenty budget kind of helped us close the gap that we're facing. So to get there, you kind of have to understand how the levy limits work, so there's two parts to the levy limit. The first part is the general fund, the general fund increase is limited to net new construction, that's a hard cap. No matter what happens, we have net new growth of two point six-three percent, we can only increase the dollars in the general fund by that amount. Not tied to assessed equalized value, which are both really positive this year, five percent and eight percent or more, both. Debt service, the debt service part of the levy limit worksheet is tied to actual debt. So what the debt service levy does is equal, and if you look at the bottom of the page, right now, that is currently what the debt service budget is for two thousand twenty. So what had happened previously with the TID transfer issue is we were under-leveying the debt service for years. So if you look at that budget, it's pretty straightforward, it's just what is the general fund portion of the debt, let's levy for it. It's what we had been doing previously, we under-leveied, we were under-leveing the debt service, and then kind of sticking in an IOU from the TID to make it balance. So then moving on, so what this technique does is basically, we incur general obligation long-term debt, but on the very short side. When we do that, we're able to levy for it in two thousand twenty, and what it does is allows us to fund some projects in two thousand twenty, and then we pay back the loan next year, incur just a very nominal amount of interest. But we're able to levy for it because it does qualify as long-term debt, even though we would take it in October, since the term is over a year and the conditions in here, we have a prepay option, we pay it back in October, and increase the levy. So the terms of the loan for Citizen State Bank, we financed bank loan, thirteen-month duration, prepay option, they quoted us two point five percent, and then qualifies as long-term debt, we get a debt schedule, so the logistics part of it works this way. We received the proceeds in two thousand nineteen in a capital projects fund, and since that's a non-lapsing fund, the money sits there. So now we have something we can levy for and pay for in two thousand twenty, we do the project in two thousand twenty, we collect the levy, we pay off the loan, and we get the project done. So it's kind of a catch-up, it's a way to increase the levy through the debt service part of it, based on what AILers has recommended. So if we would do this, then we have an updated debt service budget, so we've increased our, our debt service budget and the corresponding levy by those amounts. The one fifty-four, three eighty-seven, we have to put it in at the full amount, so we put it in at one hundred fifty-four thousand, eight hundred thirty-seven, as if it's going to go to term, but we would likely prepay it before that. So I know it's a lot to throw at you, that's why we have it for discussion and possible action, we can defer for two weeks. So I kind of want to talk about the pros and cons, you know, we're facing Moody's downgrade. Like I said, we've historically under-levied, you know, pretty significantly, especially in the last six to eight years. The effect on the mill rate, we haven't presented the full budget yet, but right now, the mill rate we have projected as an increase of around two percent with all the other things we're doing. The turnaround is very simple, we don't have the notification requirements we have, like bonds and formal notes. And then the alternatives, there's always alternatives, you know, we can increase the amount of fund balance applied this year as we kind of work our way back, and we'll look at additional cuts, so, and I know it's a lot to throw at you, but basically, AILers does recommend this. It seems like it's a good tool for us this year because our assessed value is going up over five percent, our equalized value is up eight percent, and we can't capture that through the general fund side of the levy this year and get things done. So I'll kind of open it up to questions, I know you probably have quite a few.
There is a motion by Mr. Handler, Mr. Handler, what is your motion? A motion to...
Approve the resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution, there's a second by Mr. Fire, discussion, Mr. Butke.
Yeah, I agree, Ron, with everything you've said there, I don't have a problem with, with the reason why. I have a problem with, we're talking about approve something when we even had, have not had a budget meeting.
Correct.
So that's, that's where I have a little bit of an issue there. Maybe we want to wait two weeks and put it on the agenda right away for the budget session, I think it makes sense to do that.
Yeah, and, and you know, that being the option, we could approve it if you would be willing to on the night of the twenty-first, that would be after the first budget meeting. Maybe at that point, you will see the whole picture come together as to what the budget looks like. We are in kind of a time crunch otherwise, because we need to... as to what the budget looks like. We are in kind of a time crunch otherwise because we need to do this by November first, correct, Ron?
Correct. That's recommended by, by November one.
But yes, that would be fine.
Can I ask you, Ron?
Sure.
Your opinion of this? Is this something that we should wait on or that we should do?
With a turnaround for, for loyal bank, we can get it done if we wait two weeks. And it's probably, probably a fair point to look at the whole budget to take a look at it. I, you know, it's really the council's choice there.
Okay. Do you have a, do you have a net, do you have a net cost of if we do take it out in November and then do end up paying it off in January or February, what that interest cost?
I think it's like three hundred dollars because we're being charged two and a half percent interest. It sits in our bank account at one point eight percent interest. We hold it for three months and pay it back.
So it's three hundred dollars? Okay.
Is it proper, Mayor, to make an amendment to that to hold it off for two weeks?
If you would like to amend it, you certainly can.
That would, that would be my amendment.
Yeah. So you want to amend the motion to hold this vote off for two weeks or to vote on this in two weeks? Is that it?
Yes.
Is there a second? That's a motion by Mr. Butke. Is there a second? There is no, oh, there is a second by Mrs. Spurros. Discussion, Mr. Henler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we could do it a lot simpler if we just, if I just withdraw my motion, I believe. And the second withdraws theirs and we don't have to go through six or more. Or go to start a commotion, is it?
Is it? It doesn't matter. It'd be clean. It would be, it would be better, Mr. Henler, just to vote on the postponement. Because there you're kind of doing the same thing. So the, the motion is to hold over for two weeks. There's a motion by Mr. Butke, second by Mrs. Spurros. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please vote.
On the amendment.
On the amendment. So it's five to four, Nick. So now we go to vote on the original motion to approve, to approve this budget resolution twenty nineteen dash forty one. There was a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please vote. And that motion carries nine to zero. All right.
Thank you.
A request to approve resolution number twenty nineteen dash forty two, allowing an exception to section nine dash, dash forty six one of the municipal code to permit open containers at the Main Street Marshfield Beer Walk on October twenty fourth, five to eight P M, presented by Pat Zep's Assistant Police Chief.
Good evening. This should be an easy one, I hope. As you well know, you've approved three prior resolutions for the allowance of open containers in various parts of the city, specifically in the interest of curbing binge drinking. Without covering all that, I think we're, we're good on that topic. But the prior ones were the United Way Wine Lock, Hub City Days and the Central Wisconsin State Fair. As a department, we really experienced no negative issues from these. So coming up on October twenty fourth, Main Street Marshfield has their first annual beer walk. And that's going to be from five P M to eight thirty P M. And we are requesting an exemption to the open container law in the area of the one hundred block of South Central Avenue to the nine hundred block of South Central Avenue, also including the one hundred block of East Third Street, one hundred block of East Eighth Street and the one hundred block of West Ninth Street. And it'll be during that timeframe. And this event will be monitored by police officers. So with that, we would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Motion to approve resolution number twenty nineteen dash forty two, motion by Mr. Jockick, second by Mr. Fires. Discussion, Mr. Whitzel.
This is a significantly larger area than in the past. Is that correct?
In comparison to the Wine Lock?
Yes.
It could be geographically bigger. I don't have the specifics of the Wine Lock. That's going to run, yeah, roughly, I think the Brew Pub is farthest south.
So it's because of the nature of the businesses that are participating that it's
That would, that would be my assumption.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please vote. And that motion carries seven to two. Item N, update use of Facebook Live presented by Tom Lob's Communication Director.
Thank you, Mayor. About three months ago, you got, the council asked me to come back and give a report on Facebook and that's something I, I wanted to do. So I'm trying to see if David had put this on our screen here for my presentation. Here we go. And I just wanted to kind of go over a little bit about what Facebook is. So there's any, any kind of confusion. This may help residents as well as yourselves. Just remember that Facebook can be used in multiple ways and I'll go down the list on this. A registered user again can watch, a registered user of Facebook, on a Facebook platform can watch it on a mobile, a tablet or a desktop device. And when they get that, they can register and subscribe to live notifications. So fifteen minutes before this meeting, they would actually get a live notification if they're on Facebook. Questions came up about three months ago, is if I don't use Facebook, then what do we do? And that is now embedded on two different sites and I can show you where those are. That give you an idea. They are embedded on our city site, which I put on just before the meeting and then they are taken out. That is taken down. And it's, and it's also in the Marshfield Media Access site. So I will go to the Marshfield Media Access site and let it boot up and it would be right in here is where it's supposed to be. And it was just there. So why it's not there, I don't know, but it was just there. Technology wants to elude me, but it was just there two minutes ago before I came up. So don't know why it's not there, but anyway, it would be right here. It shouldn't say unavailable. It has worked. I've watched it during our meetings. So I don't know because I'm on a wireless signal here. That could be a problem, problem. But let's go back into back there. We'll close out. Close that curtain tab and close this guy. And I do want to go back into our regular city website because a lot of people will go there. And what I do is I put this under our recent news area. And what it is, is this player is embedded into the video and I, this is really surprising that it is on there like that because it was working. So technology has embarrassed me a bit, but I, I don't, I'm not sure. And it was working and maybe it has something to do with this computer, this computer versus the one I was using. But, but anyway, this is where people should be able to watch it. I have been able to watch it both ways. So I will check on that, which is really odd why that isn't there. Pardon? I knew somebody was going to say that. Yeah. So it is working. So I don't know why this platform and it might be this computer because of the video player within it, which I probably should have checked within it, the embed, but I couldn't put it on until, I can't put the embed file until about fifteen to ten minutes before a meeting because I have to get this link. And at least it is working according to Scott and it has worked. So it must be this computer, but that's a good thing to know. So anyway, it's, it's in the two places. If you don't use Facebook, I know that was a big concern. And that's where it's addressed on two sites. I will talk, I just want to mention that we do have a YouTube channel. I know it's not part of the Facebook, but I just think it's really important that you know about video. That's another place that you can watch these meetings is on our YouTube channel and the link is right here. And I gladly get you the link if you'd like to have it sometime. It is also on the city website. Questions you might ask about Granicus, are we still using that? Yes. And there is, it is streamed there live at this point right now. And the meetings are also available at any time on demand as well. And that has been in use for several years. And I do update, update this on the city website on the homepage. So if you click into the scrolling banner, that's where our Granicus platform is. And again, just reemphasize, we're on, on channel nine ninety one on our cable. And if you guys are interested in seeing the cable guide, a lot of people have always wanted to know what's on. You can get that through our marshfieldmediaaccess.org website. And I just want to give you a little bit about Facebook. Some people want to know, well, how is it working? Where are we at? Well, the city has twenty five, two thousand five hundred and seventy five followers and it's up on, up two hundred and sixty three in the last few months, which is good. And right now, our Facebook page on Marshfield Media Access, again, which is new, no promotion, no, nothing's, nothing's spent, three hundred and forty seven followers. And then our YouTube pages are relatively new. We both, we have two of those, one on the city side, which is our meetings and one's on the Marshfield Media Access side, which covers a lot of stuff that's done by volunteers, community producers, as well as staff. And then just to give an idea about our council meetings that we're watching right now on our Facebook, our views, we're averaging about a hundred and seventy three views. It reaches about five hundred and forty two with eleven percent rate, click rate, which is actually really pretty good for starting this off in only about three months. And then just to kind of, just went a little bit faster. Just to see what other Facebook videos, like our pool, our pooling together video has fifteen hundred views, a lot, twelve shares and it reaches about two thousand hundred, two thousand eight hundred and fifty five people on Facebook. I know it's a, it shows a little bit about what the power of Facebook can do. And then just to get an idea on the shows and events, and this is the Marshfield Media Access Facebook page, not the city's, because these are programs that are done by community producers as well as staff, but outside the city government. You can see Experience Marshfield, a show that is done by staff and hosted by Mayor McManus. We're averaging about three hundred and twenty one views, shared, four shares and reaching about six hundred and fifty seven per show, which is good. Our spotlight has been good. It's a show that I do, which is places like United Way, nonprofits. We do those on a weekly basis or a monthly basis. And you can kind of just see down the, the, down the page. You can also see what Dairy Fest Parade did, three thousand five hundred three views on, on Facebook, which was really good. And over forty one shares. So you can see people are wanting it and use it. And, and then the last, I'll just go to a ribbon cutting. It's something that we go to and there's one, quite a bit. And, and quite, there, there are quite a bit is what I was trying to say and actually have one, I believe tomorrow. But the Wassa Homes ribbon cutting was about eleven hundred views. So just, the reason I put this is I wanted to show the power and the importance of our social media within the city and Marshfield Media Access. But, but back to what I was talking about with that video, it is embedded and, but I will, I will check on if it, if, if that's a concern of other residents or players that computers, because every computer is a bit different. And, but I want to make sure that is, anybody can see it. That's really important. So, but I'm glad to hear that it's working on Scott's platform. Any questions on, on Facebook?
Mr. Jockick.
Okay. I've got three, mostly just probably clarifications.
Yep.
You use the word register and subscribe.
Okay.
One of the first one is, can you want to explain register on Facebook and subscribe? A subscription usually involves money. I assume that there is no charge for any of this. Do you want to just clarify that for me?
Sure. When you register, I, I put register for Facebook. When you have a Facebook account, you, you register your own account. And if you're using Facebook to that level, you have to register yourself as a user. Again, you don't have to as long as that embed piece works on our city website and Marshfield Media Access. Otherwise you have to have Facebook to see it. And that's why it's really important. Now, subscribe pushes over to the YouTube side. You have, that's our terminology. You need to subscribe to the channel and then you will get a notification of a video that is uploaded if you subscribe. And you can go through there and minimize the things you want and you don't want because YouTube can have a lot of different videos. But one thing we have done is had a city of Marshfield YouTube page, which we felt was important, which is city government related, all our meetings, other things that are related to city and the pool. And then we have a Marshfield Media Access YouTube page as well. They're within each other, but they're not the same page. Easier to find stuff. Again, you have to subscribe.
So this is, I've only referred to the YouTube. I, I thought the face, that was in that first page.
Okay.
Talked about Facebook Live and you use the word subscribe in there. I just want to make sure that that's clear to everyone.
Yeah, I would, I guess, to say it should be subscribe YouTube and
Okay.
What you can do is, you know, you like a Facebook page, you like it. It's different than your own page of friends. You like a page.
And that's what you mean by subscribe?
That's what I meant by subscribe.
Okay, all right, all right.
It, I should have just put like.
It would help me. I know what like is.
But you can like a lot of our pages. We have quite a few. We even have an aquatics page now that's
Okay, all right. Do we have any idea where people are watching from? Is there any way geographically to know whether they're local people or people from out of town? Is there any way of knowing that at all or is it not know, not able to know that?
No, there is. We can dig down and drill down into the analytics. I don't have them now, but we definitely could. I could provide those by drilling down to see where people are searching. Google Analytics will easily provide that on the embedded piece to see if it's somebody locally, somebody on a mobile tablet, on a computer. If they're using Safari, you can really drill down, yes.
At some point in the future, you know, once this has been up for a while, it might be interesting to, to find that out. And then in this last one, the shows and events, you want to clarify or maybe only for me, the, the definition of views versus per show. You have like that spotlight. You have averaging five hundred and forty seven views. Seven shares, I imagine, was seven, seven of those people are sharing it with someone reaching twelve hundred. I don't understand why there are those numbers.
Yeah, just a little clarification on the views. If you, really it's clicks is what it is. But I, you know, they're important and people get to us by, by at least clicking. We do have an average time. I did not put that in here that can tell you how long you're watching a certain video. If it's, if you're falling off a video right away and clicking off, I, I don't have that. But the views are people getting there. The shares, as you know, are people that have Facebook pages or, excuse me, that have a Facebook page that are watching what you're doing and want to share it to their friends. So they could have a thousand friends. More people that share, the better. That's on all our programming. If we had tonight, twenty people share, our, our, our amount of views would go up drastically. And then our reach are the people that are actually watching it for a duration of time. It's a bit different than the views. Your reach is the amount of people that, except right here we go. Experience Marshfield, it reaches six hundred and fifty seven different people, not the views. And I can get you a little bit of explanation of reach. It is a little bit confusing, but that's the way I've understood it. It reaches the amount of people, not the clicks of the view.
So would we have any idea how many people are watching right now?
Yes. If it would show on here, it would show. Scott might be able to tell me if there's anybody on. It tells you at the top, we, we'd be able, a user would be able to see it. So we have three at this point right now.
Okay.
Three online, watching it live.
All right.
But they can watch it right away tonight. As soon as the meeting's over, it's there.
All right. Thank you for that education, Mr. Whitzel.
Thank you. Part of the hope, I guess, through this was also, you know, projecting out there one way is one thing and that's what we get through cable and through some of the other tools we had. Part of it was also the potential of a two way communication. And one of the things that we had talked about was turning off the instantaneous responses, comments, but then providing an outlet where they could reach out to you or the communication staff with questions, thoughts, those types of things. Has that happened at all? Do we have any information about anybody that's
Yeah, and I do have a last slide to that. I didn't kind of go to it, but I probably should have here. Sorry about that. But what I'm, what we are is we are still, even with, with the change and how everyone uses cell phones, we still are, are not allowing Facebook comments during this meeting. They are hidden actually. They're not deleted. They're hidden by staff, my David or myself when we're, when a meeting is going on. And they're reinstated. They are reinstated after the meeting at this point. But I'll be honest, we haven't had a lot of comments, really, I think, one or two. Nobody's really commenting on the meetings at this Nobody's really commenting on the meetings at this point in time, since we've been doing it. I will, I monitor the messaging, if a message comes in directly from a constituent, I will look to get that answered and get back to them. But as in comments itself, if there was, there isn't many right now, but in our general comments through Facebook, I would say they're not all answered, is there be quite a few? Maybe it's a good idea, we, I, you know, it's something I bring up to our, our communications committee.
Mr. Butky.
Tom, when people do have a comment, do we find out, or do you find out who it is? Do they have to identify themselves? Because I know the newspaper, at one time, even had fictitious names, and it would be, like, when I get a call from somebody, they will tell me who it is and where they live, and I don't release that to anybody else, but just so we, we know that, not that we don't want to receive comments from other people, but, you know, it'd be nice to know who they are.
Comments are, are recorded by the user, which is a first and last name. So, Facebook doesn't allow anonymous, as I know. I suppose they could have a fake account. Facebook's pretty strong at shutting down people, if they're not using, doing the rules correctly. But what's nice is a messenger is like an email, but it's through Facebook, which we do get those from time to time, and they pop up, and I'm able to go right there and directly message that individual, which I think is the best way, if anybody is watching, is to use that. Nobody else sees that, but then they can ask a question on anything at the meeting or in general, and I can find a department head, get that answered, and get back to them within twenty-four hours. So, we, I do watch the message, I think it's a great tool. Comments is something like Tom mentioned, if it gets on something else, we may need to look at it, but, you know, it, it's been pretty, I, I haven't seen any issues with it or anything that, I guess those comments need to be answered. I, I guess, not to keep on, but I, if there was something that needed clarification, and I have seen them, like a road, I would be able to go and get that information from one of the department heads, and comment as a city of Marshfield. I have done that, actually, and keep an eye on it, so, yep.
Alright, seeing no further questions. Tom, thank you very much. Item O, adjourned to closed session under Wisconsin's statutes, chapter nineteen point eight five one G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy, be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become adjourned involved. Possible litigation involving development agreement in tid number seven. Their motion to go in and close session, motion by Mr. Whitzel, second by Mr. Butky. Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries nine to zero. Thank you, we are in closed session, we're not going to take a break either. We're not going to take a break either.
I have a suggestion. Wait, request. Um, I'm sorry, I put my computer away, so I'm not sure of the, of the ordinance number. But, um, we did receive an email from a gentleman with concerns about the, um, do not carry, um, uh, sign on, on, on our building here. And, um, apparently we have an ordinance against that. So I would like for that to be brought to the council for discussion.
All righty, we'll do it. Any other future items? Mr. Butky.
Is there, is there a sign on, on here? I know there's no smoke. Is it signed for no vaping?
Uh, there, there is not, I don't believe. Um, and we do have on October 21st at our next meeting, we have, uh, someone coming from the county to talk about the, the concerns of the health issues. And I've also asked the city attorney to take a look at what we have in place today and how that affects e-cigarettes and vaping. So we'll kind of bring all that together on the 21st.
Mr. Whitzel.
To piggyback off of that, um, I know there's been some discussion at Park and Rack about updating their ordinances for, uh, tobacco use, uh, within the parks. And they're looking at expanding it, include vaping products. Uh, one of the things that's a concern is that there's really not a lot of teeth to that. And so I guess if we could, on the heels of the research that's done in the presentation, if we could look at maybe adjusting our city ordinance to include some of those products and then also to maybe include, uh, those park areas and a smoking vaping ban would be nice to maybe have that addressed.
Yeah.
And, and we gotta be careful. We're talking about these, on a, uh, discussion, getting it on there.
Yep.
There, there is some, that's in the works right now.
Good, good. Enough for me. Right. Anything further for future agendas? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Motion by Mr. Bargender, second by Mr. Whitzel. Thank you all very much. We are adjourned.
Right.